Well, let the gentle ladies have the seats and stand. So, thank you. We're going to go ahead and call the next meeting to order. And on the agenda, I think everybody's aware, we have an Evergy solar discussion, Save Agriculture Resources, Run Bridge, and C and V Application Tax Rule Corrections. What we will do, we're going to call to order the meeting. Roll call, Josh and I, Brandon Smith, Les Holm, Michelle Morris, all present. Additions or deletions to the agenda, I would advise we don't add to. It's going to be a good discussion, but I would like to strike the twenty-minute and the thirty-minute, and then we will kind of give the time as necessary. So I'll need, if everybody agrees, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes. Laura wanted to strike hers as well.
Okay. No executive session?
If I could please end the gimbal mapping, it was received today, it was to be turned back into the meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
For G A S.
Permit for gimbal mapping. Okay, anything else? Now, I will need a motion to approve the agenda with the strike and the addition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Okay, now, public comment. I know why a lot of you are here, many of you are here, so I'd like to open this up for people that would like to speak, but obviously I think there's going to be a lot of folks that would like to speak. So as we've done before, I'd like to allot a couple minutes for everybody, but I'm not real stickler and real picky, obviously. I'm not going to stand here and stare at my clock. But if you are going to speak, please keep it to two minutes. You know, obviously, if you run over a little bit, there's no big hook that's going to come get you, so please speak your piece, and we can do it in a peaceful manner, I believe. And I think maybe we could start on this side of the room. If anyone would like to speak on this side of the room, please come forward, state your name, and give your statement.
Hi, folks. Stanley Hart.
Good evening, Stanley.
Northeast Osage County. I'm just wanting to know about whether we even have in such a meeting. I believe we have at least two of these commissioners that have not changed their mind about reversing anything as far as renewables go. So is there any reason for it? What's the push?
Evergy requested a meeting, so just like anybody else, we're going to give them some time on the agenda.
Okay. Well, Evergy, okay, it isn't for sale. Thank you.
Next person along the wall there, who would like to speak? I know it can be hard to speak. I did not like doing it when I first got up here, I can tell you that. But if you'd like to be heard, I mean, everybody's here to speak, so.
There's somebody out there.
Well, he's in the hallway, so he can step in. Is there anyone else in the hallway that wants to come along the wall here? Because I'm going to kind of go along the wall around the room. State your name, please.
My name is Colton Landry. Kind of newer here, I've been in Osage County for about four years. Don't really care if I'm mic or not, never have. I'm a veteran from Southern Arkansas. Served this country honestly, and I believe I speak my language. First off, Ms. Cooper, last year, you assaulted the county clerk, and you're getting into a bad dashboard for a lot of people here. Have a chance.
This platform's the place for that currently. It's obviously, you're right, it's public comment to speak, but...
It is.
I don't know that that is appropriate for this platform.
Going forward on the solar part, I do believe that there's a place for it. I believe that we should open an ear. That being said, Evergy has posted record profits for the last, how many quarters? Who's Evergy in here? How many quarters have y'all had record profits in the last two years? Last two years, every quarter, y'all have posted record profits. And yet, y'all had the, I guess, you go to K C C and ask for a rate increase. What is going to come back to Osage County from this summer project? You're not going to lower our electric bill, any? So why should we give up anything for y'all when y'all are not going to give us any kind of breaks on money? Our electric bill's gone through the roof, you're making profits pissed over here. Two hundred million dollars come up in the last quarter. What do we get out of it? Crap home. Second our way in, nothing in return.
Next along that line? Okay.
Paul DeNas, for all I need. I would like to reserve my comment for after we hear from everyone. I don't, I'm really not the person to speak to, I have no idea why we're here. None of this makes any logical sense. So if I can do that, I'd like to do...
Well, we're having the statement portion now, in an essence, multichord, let's keep the meeting going so we don't run into midnight, and to give everybody an opportunity to speak. I don't want to turn the Evergy portion into a large Q and A where I feel like maybe some of us won't get out the information. They have a right to get the information out to people, so.
Okay, now's the time. When the solar is proven to be totally inefficient, just, or asking to spend a whole bunch of money and build something that at best is going to be, what, thirty-five percent of the time, is going to be able to produce current, electrical current? I don't see any reason why you guys are even entertaining this notion when it wouldn't even exist if it wasn't for government subsidies. All of that, if everybody here is going to be paying more taxes in some way or another. If you're going to be building, there's no doubt among, in my mind, or anybody else's probably in this group, that doesn't realize that we need to address more power. But the idea of building something that's only going to produce power on a part-time basis, and the idea that you're going to store it in batteries is ridiculous. It, if you're going to use lithium, there's a string of reasons, mild blown, why that's not a good idea, not a ethical idea. Where that power is, where that, with the lithium is mined and how is mined, what it's going to do to that amount that you're talking about using, if that's what you're planning, is all it's going to do is give a shortage of lithium where we can use it like in our phones, in our power, mobile power tools. So it just doesn't make any sense. If you're going to spend the money, spend the money on something that's going to be able to produce base load power twenty-four seven, and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else out?
Along the line there, along that wall, anybody? Just keep coming all around to the next. Anybody out in the hallway?
A lot of people out there.
Well. Any speakers out there?
No.
There's a few people out there to speak, and we're going to speak together, if that's okay.
Okay.
They're going to yield their time, if you allow, me, they'll be here with me.
Okay. Sir, did you want to speak? Just please announce your name.
My name's Felston Kirchendahl, I'm a seventh-generation farmer. There's a twenty-five-year ban on this. Y'all, you were pushing that, understanding, Mr. Hart, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Davies, three people are going to get filthy rich, and the rest of us are going to be left to suffer. It's not respectful to the community, it's not respectful to your neighbors, it's not right. You're going to wreck property values to everyone around you. It shows you don't care about your home, you don't care about the future of agriculture. That's it.
In the back.
Sit down, sit down, rest.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Nannam. Evergy is ignoring our county's twenty-five-year, or our county's ban and twenty-five-year moratorium on industrial women's solar, and has gone behind our backs leasing land after the ban was put in place. They are trying to convince our commissioners to let them violate our ban. They will save all of these over to the county, and they'll give the county millions of dollars, a very small amount compared to what their actual taxes should be. No matter how much money they say they will give the county, our taxes are highly unlikely to go down, but our electric rates will skyrocket since Evergy makes the customers pay for all of their projects and operating expenses. Kansas Free Hunter, February fifth. Paul Snyder, with the Kansas Industrial Consumers Group, said Evergy has been increasing capital spending at an unsustainable rate. Whenever Evergy invests in new poles, wires, substations, and power plants, most of those projects is passed to consumers. C J Ammoni, July tenth. Evergy can charge Kansas customers higher rates while building new power plants. The K C C, Kansas Corporation Commission, stated, "The commission is troubled by the frequency and magnitude of current cases. Affordability must be a major priority as Evergy addresses a seemingly endless list of justifiable projects and issues." September twenty-fifth, Evergy received approval for still another rate hike to recover investments. Now, here's another quote from the Lance Times, September twenty-fifth. Dorothy Barnett, from the Climate and Energy Project, said, "Many people already struggle to pay their utility bills. At what point is it just too expensive for us to keep having Evergy build and build for itself?" Here's a twenty-twenty-three headline from the Beacon Capital Journal that is still today. "Evergy Touts Financial Earnings to Investors While Seeking Rate Hikes From Customers." Free State News, August twenty-three. "Evergy Executives Raking in Millions of Dollars While People Are Struggling to Keep the Lights On." To Beacon Capital Journal, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. "Evergy Was One Point Nine Six, One Hundred Ninety-Six Million Rate Increase After Profit In Eight Hundred Seventy-Eight Million in Twenty Twenty-Four." Now, I know they didn't get the entire one hundred ninety-six, but the profit of eight hundred seventy-eight million in twenty-four didn't change. In addition, the Evergy C E O made seven point one four million in twenty-twenty-four, and stockholders will pay five hundred ninety-seven million in cash dividends. So, a couple more quotes, and we do it. Even President Trump stated, "Wind and solar are the biggest scam of the century," and that was reported in August. "The only ones who will profit are the developer, leasing landowners, Evergy, and their shareholders, while the customers struggle with endless skyrocketing rates." So, Evergy is disrespecting our citizens, attempting to undermine the integrity of the mining zoning board and the county commissioners, betraying will of the citizens, violating our basic human rights of good health, safety, and the ability to peacefully enjoy our property. So we, the people, say this to Evergy. You can't put a price on our quality of life. Our county is not for sale. Thank you.
Next, in the back there.
I'm Stacy Graham. I live in this county. This county is known for recreation and agriculture. Evergy comes in, covers everything with solar panels, we're going to end up with land that is poisoned by the chemicals in these solar panels for three hundred years plus. Okay, we have what they call gorilla hail in this area, huge hailstones. They're going to pound those panels, they're going to cause them to leak. They're going to leak into the lake, which there goes your egg, your agriculture that they're covering, the lake that they are polluting. Not only are they polluting the lake for us, and I'm talking our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids, every generation from here on out, they're also polluting the lake because it's the Meridaseen River that is being dammed up. They are going to pollute everything on down. It's going to reach all the way down to my family and my friends where I come from. All right? This is ridiculous. They should not be allowed to put this in place and destroy our land, destroy our... We are stewards of the land, okay? What type of legacy do you want to pass on to the kids, to the grandkids, to the great-grandkids? Do you want to pass on a toxic wasteland, or do you want to pass on the heritage of farming? Thank you.
Next, in the line?
Yes, sir. Bill Curtis, Osage City. Just the three points I keep dwelling on are, one, with the twenty-five-year moratorium, how are they allowed to lease land? How are they allowed to have engineers come and do the testing? How are they allowed to go to the school districts, the townships, the cities, and promise millions and millions of dollars, you know, on their opinions? I'm concerned with that. Number two, hugely concerned when the hail hits, when the damage hits, the damage done during construction, because you can't take that many skids, steers, and that much stuff and not have something run over. We all know what happens. It's part of being human, we all are. But you take that, next, the Meridaseen runs through the water supply, and I wish I had the accurate numbers, but I think it's five cities and seven water districts that all pull water from there, county, what, Ottawa, and Lewisburg, and on. Anyway, it could have huge effects if things go bad, and we can argue the safety and who has the facts, we can argue that until we're blue in the face. Third, I have no personal quarrel with Davies and Thompsons, and, you know, they've been good neighbors, they've all been good to me, living out there next to them. But, you know, they come from a heritage, I always felt they were good stewards of the land. I don't think this is being a good steward of the land in their multi-generational operations. They have very successful operations, very smart businessmen. I can't question what they do, they've been very successful. I mean, way more than I am. But to see this as only a revenue source and not a good steward for the land, not good for anybody living around it, not good for the water, and not good for the future of Osage County. I hope you think about it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can start right here, this corner chair, if you'd like to speak, and then we'll just snake across and back to where you got everybody.
Hi, my name's Kevin Walter. Appreciate the time, Mr. Sir, it's a tough job. I don't live in the county, but I own a little bit of land in the county. I've been in the power industry for twenty years. I'm developing right now a solar project in Fort County, Kansas, it's getting built, almost a C O D. I believe that's a six or seven project that's, that county has probably on board over fifteen years. Seen a lot of revenue front, it's going to be a good project for that county, lots of payments to landowners, lots of payments to the counties, to the school districts. These projects aren't going in places, I just ask that you consider with an opening ear. Try to sort out, you know, a lot of the motions involved here, and if we can be a resource to you in any way, having to do so, I support this project. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Please, sir. Go. Focus.
Cody, out there.
Is that hitting your face?
Anyone following me?
Copy for each of you.
In the middle of this? Please, sir.
Sorry, Heather.
What? Oh, no.
Josh, you were the court, I'll give it to you.
Nice big breath. This is some of our family, some of our school have been tonight, so we have some prepared remarks. We're landowners, leased Evergy. So good evening to all of you. Osage County has struggled for many years now with the loss of several businesses and many residents. Just like many counties around us, each county tries to deal with this same problem, but very few have any success in raising more tax dollars through economic development and maintaining the services required by the remaining population in that county. We now rely on the schools and county to be our largest employers, all of which need tax dollars to operate. Sometime soon, a cut to Osage County services in your region, and a cut to Osage County services and property tax increases will be on the agenda for you commissioners. Fortunately for us, we have Evergy proposing the largest economic development project in the history of our county. I doubt when any of you ran for this office, you thought you would be considering a two-hundred-million-dollar tax-paying project for Osage County. Let's talk about the moratorium we currently have in place. How is this positive for our county? Do you, as commissioners, not want to consider a new business that wants to come into our county at no cost to us? Evergy is highly profitable and a well-managed company. Has Ms. Mendoza, with our Economic Development Office, been instructed not to search for companies that are highly profitable and well-managed? And what about my rights as a landowner? Don't I have the right to do as I want with my land, as long as it doesn't harm others? Taking away landowners' rights is not how America was built, and not how it is or ought to be. We are candidates, not California. We shouldn't have to surrender our rights as a landowner to the government view. We should be able to use our land the way we want to use it. Osage County has a small and noisy group of people against just about any type of change that comes along. I call them the People Against Progress, or the P A P. Most of them do not live near the project, some don't live in the county, many of them do not care if Osage County has better schools, fire departments with better equipment, or better roads. They believe their rights extend over their horizon and mine in the property line. Evergy has been a good corporate partner in the counties they do business in. In Coffee County alone, their employees and Evergy donated forty-seven thousand dollars to various charities last year. More money flowing into Osage County is a good thing for our charities and churches. The P A P has never stated one scientific fact when they speak against the project. They say solar panels create drinking water issues. Our group of landowners would not be involved in a project that would poison the water of our children or our grandchildren. Besides that, we plan on grazing cattle or sheep under the solar panels. We have already had discussions with Dr. Kelsey Bentley, King of the State University, about this, and there is currently a project in southeast Kansas that is grazing under solar panels. Claims about drinking water are fear mongering, plain and simple. The moratorium prevents us from even having an evidence debate about whether they are true and justify turning the project down. If you read any information the P A P has, all you hear is drama, fake news, and jealousy. The red shirts they wear are significant, as red as the symbol of an overdrawn checking account. That is the direction they're taking our county. They also like to talk about how great agriculture is. Most of them are not involved in agriculture, and have no idea what it takes to have any type of success in that business. I am deeply involved in agriculture. I know that success requires diversification, accessing the sources of income the land can provide. I know that a farming operation does not diversify size. All it takes is bad weather, a decline in the cattle market, and dozens of other events outside of our control to break an agriculture operation. One of our former county commissioners sits with the P A P. He brought the Redding Wind Farm to Osage County. He supported more tax dollars then, and would support them now if other landowners were involved. I'm not asking you...
Don't speak for me, Perry.
I'm not asking you to permit wind farm.
You'll have your turn.
I'm not, I am not even...
You'll have your turn, please don't speak out. I'm sorry, Perry will interrupt you, but everybody's been doing really good and just listening. You will have your turn to say your piece as well.
Fine. Please. I'm not asking you to permit a wind farm. I'm not even asking you to allow solar projects wherever they might be proposed anywhere in Osage County. I'm asking you to set aside the moratorium so that we can have a fair, free, and open hearing about this specific Evergy project without having to go to court to have them decide. The moratorium is unlawful. Again, let's remove the drama, fake news, and jealousy from what is a business deal, and consider the facts. This is a great project for Osage County. Our family standing up here is the reason why Kim and I are involved in the project. The future for us is our family. It is our responsibility to do the best job we can with our business while we are here so the future generations can continue. I would ask you to listen closely to Evergy and think about how well Osage County could operate with increased tax revenues from a large commercial taxpayer. I would ask you to remove the moratorium tonight, restore our landowners' rights, and let's move Osage County forward. Do you want to go down in history as the three commissioners that turned down two-hundred-million dollars in tax revenues? Thank you.
Sir?
More money!
Please, again, our words will not be tolerated, please. I'm not going to say it a lot.
I thought we did.
Wait, I know what you're doing, okay? I get it, I do get it. Attentions are very high, I understand, it's a very, it's a tough topic to talk about. But we're trying to let everybody have their word, and I'm trying to allow the people to have their word as well. So please, none of that. Next in line?
May I respond since both called out?
You're on the agenda, your group, right?
Well, I'm not one to...
You'll have the opportunity. We're trying to keep to the core here.
This is still public comment, right?
It is still public comment, but...
I was a commissioner when the Redding Farm, Wind Farm, went in. We had hearings, and there was no moratorium then, and zero people came to complain about the nine turbines in Osage County. Most of it's aligned, Tim. And I will point out that if the Redding Wind Farm was paying taxes instead of pilot payment, they'd be paying Osage County four times what they are paying if it was taxed instead of under a pilot payment. So be that as it may. That was before there was a moratorium, and like I said, there was zero opposition to those nine in the areas that are located in Osage County. And the wind farm is very different than a solar farm, the amount of impact it has. Not that they're good, bad, or indifferent, they're just very different projects. Not that they're good, bad, or indifferent, they're just very different projects.
Okay, thank you. Next in line. Back to you guys. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Say your name, please.
Yep. My name's Wes Goodnight.
Say that again?
Yeah, Wes is Goodnight, a good morning, good night. Yeah. Yeah, I'm here to speak in strong support for a solar project in Osage County. So, I want to share why I think this is important and why I do-
Is Wes here?
Please, again, as I stated before, I don't want to have to gavel people and ask them to leave. Please.
I think she was saying she couldn't hear.
No, she said that you-
I didn't hear the address. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, please.
So, yeah, my name is Wes Goodnight. I'm house at 2726 South Shore Drive, Assau, Kansas. So, I do think this is a tremendous opportunity for the community. I grew up in Clark County, Kansas. It's a rural area much like Osage. Over the years, I've watched my home county struggle. We've had declined populations, families are moving away, fewer kids in classrooms. Our kids have had to consolidate with neighboring schools. We went to four-day school weeks and we do a lot of the teaching online. Our infrastructure is taking a beating too. County roads are crumbling, bridges need repairs, and there just is not enough revenue to go around, let alone build for the future. So, it's been tough watching places deteriorate that I grew up and love. Four years ago, my family and I bought a home in Osage County, and we love the community, the people, and its values in our life. So, we're very excited about a solar project, a chance to bring new life to a rural Kansas without sacrificing what makes the community special. Projects like this can boost county revenue and give the schools infrastructure support that desperately needs. My perspective also comes from 17 years working at Keywood, where I manage all kinds of power generation, including solar, onshore, and offshore with natural gas and coal projects. So, from my career perspective, I'm generation agnostic. I do see the value of a balanced energy mix with fossil fuels providing reliable baseload and renewables, especially solar delivering low-cost electricity. And solar is the lowest-cost electricity available today with or without government tax credits. So, I see that including solar in the energy mix is not just smart, it's essential for keeping electricity affordable for families and businesses. This project can help Osage County lead the way, provide clean, cost-effective power while strengthening our local economy. I look at Osage and I see the same potential I wish for Clark County. A chance for, to reverse the decline, stabilize the tax base, and give our kids a reason to stay and build their lives here. The solar project has stepped toward that future, and I urge you to support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone on the back of the floor there? Are you in the, will you in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. I kind of went out into the hallway and tried to get everybody's attention. Please state your name.
Dave Davies. Thank you for this time, please. I believe in this solar project. This solar project will generate substantial revenue for Osage County and the community and the school system in Osage County. Research has shown this project to be very safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the hallway?
Mr. Chairman, can we have people speak up just a little bit so we can hear? I don't know if that microphone's hooked up or not.
That doesn't broadcast into the room. That just records the YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
My name's Russell Balding. I was born and raised in Marchant Township. When I went to school in the 60s, they preached to us, we had to improve farming, we had to, because we're agriculture area. We had to feed the world, so we had to improve, produce more with less. They put in the lakes back in the 70s. That didn't help the schools. They put in the wind generators. Lipo don't even have running water for their showers over at the high school. Now, that's not our problem, but that's there. But, that's an issue. Okay. Now, Evergy's wanting to take 20,000 to 30,000 acres out of production to put solar farms. Okay? To me, why don't they put the solar farms in an area that is not agriculture or productive? Put it where the land isn't productive. Put it in the damn desert. Put it in the mountains. Put it someplace where we aren't growing food or beef that feeds the world. I just, it's all about money, is what it is. And whoever's got the most money wins. You see that in elections. You see that everywhere. Evergy's got a lot of money behind them because we've seen and I've heard the reports that they have had from their profits. So, we are working people here, all of us. We don't have money to go pay millions of dollars to some lawyers to fight for it, but we do have a 25-year that says, "No, solar farms, don't bring them. Just keep that." That's all I'm telling.
Thank you, sir. Who has her next? Anyone? Yes, sir. Sorry, did your name go up?
Yeah.
Come on up. We'll, we'll get to you. Come on up.
Big bad auctioneer.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. My name's Larry Parker. My wife and I lived in Valley Brook Township for the last seven years. I also work here in Osage County. Spent my whole life in the area, high school, and graduated from Emporia State. For the past 10 years, I've worked in utility scale power development, which has given me a unique perspective on how these projects are going to benefit both the local community and our country as a whole. For Osage County, the advantages are straightforward. Projects like these provide stable, long-term tax revenue to support schools, maintain roads and bridges, and keep essential services like fire, gas, and law enforcement strong. That kind of support is badly needed here, especially given how much our property taxes have risen in recent years. And unlike other industries, solar delivers these benefits without placing additional burdens on schools for emergency services. There's also a broader picture we can't ignore. The demand on electric grid is growing at an unprecedented pace driven by data centers, advanced manufacturing, and robotics. These are the industries that will keep America competitive and leading the global economy for generations to come. If they all rely on one thing, a reliable, affordable supply of electricity. At the end of the day, we simply need more electrons on the grid than matter the source. Solar is one of the most proven cost-effective options available today. It can be built now without waiting for supply chains to catch up or new technologies to mature. By keeping the door open for responsible solar development, Osage County can strengthen its own tax base while also doing our part to address this national challenge. This is an opportunity to support property rights, invest in our schools and services, and contribute to the energy foundation that will drive America's continued and future leadership. Thank you.
Any kids here? Yes, sir. Kenny Graham?
Yeah, I'm one of those guys. I wasn't sure I really was all the time. My degree's, I'm mechanical engineer is what I did with pipeline, got into 41 years. It began from shovel to doing a director to several. I was gonna get into some facts and numbers, but I'm a thoughtful person. Three of the gentlemen, being one who I don't know. The other two I know very well and have always considered them friends. Still do. That's what Osage County is about. And it's really being torn apart with this thing. It really is. You aren't men, they ain't, gone isn't, whoever. Evergy ain't a man. But they are competition for a wildlife, a big competition for a wildlife. What this county is, that's right, it's your land. I support your landowner rights. Your raised cattle, use it for what it's done for. Absolutely support that. I support your ability to use it for what you want. But, most of this power, 23%, 24% efficiency, is going to go out of state. Period. Guess who's gonna pay for the capital investment? The capital investment is putting in the solar panels, putting in the inverters, everything we put in. The people that are Evergy utility payers are the people that are going to pay for that so they can ship it on the grid out of our state, charge a premium for it, and it's nothing against you guys. You're doing a job. It's your job. I've had to do my job. I didn't like it. My mom lives in Isle of Kansas. She's 89 years old. She's on Evergy. Last July, she lives on $798 social security. Last July, her kilowatt hours, she paid $161 for a utility bill. After the KCC increases and everything, she used 12 less kilowatt hours. Their utility bill went up $60. Those people are saying, "Whoopie, I'll go eat somewhere and spend more than that." To my mom, that $60 is the difference of buying food to bring to have something to eat. So, when Evergy asks us for a rate increase, when Evergy comes into our county and wants to take out, the beauty of what we have in this county, one of the few counties around, has this type of beauty. It is. It's one of the few that I have hunters come in from Fort, I've had them from 49 states and three other countries come in. My business, I run down. One thing they talk about is how clean, how beautiful this county is, the grasslands. They brag and brag on it. But the bottom line, while we got involved in this, I'm not gonna support Evergy making close to a billion dollars a year to come in and bill us and everybody in Kansas, Missouri. Not, not just your, anybody pays a bill or subsidiary pays a bill. That's what's gonna pay to put those panels up, period. Because they're not gonna do it out of the goodness of their hearts, take it out of their profits to install them. Kind of way to say, and I do want to say this. Whatever we do in this county, however it ends at the end of the day, to groups commissioners twice vote the moratorium, hell with that. It's the people in this county, and it isn't a small group, it's the people here. I don't want to turn into a Coffee County where people can't even drive down the road and look at each other. I want to have neighbors that I consider my friends. Maybe we don't always agree, and we don't agree. But to break relationships over this so Evergy can make more money? Come on, folks, let's think about it. All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in line? Anybody else outside? Maybe changed their mind? Any second chances? You might call me a lot of things, but Perry won't be, Perry won't be one of them. Yes, sir.
I'm Rexar, but live in this county 73 years. Everybody probably thinks I'm here to support Joe. But that is true or not, in fact, I think Osage County is a little bad Zeus. And we've got a bridge they closed just a year or two ago, right in the middle of our ranch. We have to go around. I'm not raising hell about that because I know Osage County doesn't have a lot of money. But I just think we need to deliver revenues. Franklin County's got all kinds of revenue, Coffee County does, Vine County does, Shawnee County does. We're sitting here, I'm paying the bills. We just need to look at that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
30 more seconds. Stanley Hartigan. If Evergy cares to help us out, Mr. Brayden over there told me in Osage City that they're looking at gas-fired plants and nuclear plants. That would help Osage, uh, Osage County with revenue and with jobs. That would be a good way to go. Or, one last possibility, rather than buy the solar panels from Asia, they could build a manufacturing plant right here in Osage County and build those, those panels here. That would create jobs. That would create revenue. Thank you all for your time.
Anybody else?
Can I just say one more thing, Arthur? I have a problem with nuclear, but please do not get involved with Bill Gates. The Bill Gates that wants to decouplate the world and make us eat his fake meat and, um, yeah, what can possibly go wrong?
Okay. I think at this point, we'll close the public comment. And I am going to allow Save Our Agriculture to go first. So, Save Our Agriculture representative or multiple representatives? They got mixed up on the agenda.
Oh, that's broken.
Yeah, I love, if y'all know that, it's me that made the change. So, if somebody wants to yell at somebody, it could be me. I take it all the time.
People can hear me a little bit better. I've spoken to them. Don't speak loudly.
I think we're the ones that really need to hear the most, so I think you, I can hear you fine.
My name's John Cambs from Marchant Township. Currently, there is a moratorium on building industrial wind, solar, and battery storage in Osage County. Until the moratorium is lifted, there really should be no discussion with Evergy or any other company designing to install any industrial renewable energy projects in the county. According to a California Globe, 25 September 2025 article entitled, "California's Failed $2.2 Billion Ivan Paw Solar Power Facility Is Shutting Down." They wrote, "Using more reliable or renewable energy causes the entire electricity grid to be unreliable because solar and wind are intermittent and inconsistent. And energy costs in California are among the highest in the nation and only continue to increase due to California's mandates of renewables and electricity production. And so will our electric rates continue to increase." Now, this was a 3,500-acre site, and solar here is used to focus light beams on towers and heat steam turbines to generate electricity. There were three of those towers there. But the key points here are solar is unreliable and electric rates continue to rise, as did the rolling blackouts in California. Not to mention the 6,000 burns a year instantaneously bursting into flames over the site. What effect will there be from the heat domes created over 3,800 acres or the eventual 20,000 or 30,000 acres of solar panels? The upper limit of panels is unknown since Evergy and every other electric company will want to create more industrial solar farms in Osage County. Remember, heat domes are created from the 160-degree Fahrenheit heat radiating from those solar panels, creating a massive microclimate changing, change affecting all the landowners around Northern Area Solar, NHS as I'll call you now on, all year round. More acreage of solar panels, the larger the heat dome and its microclimate effects. Phase one of this intermittent 300-megawatt NHS farm is 3,800 acres of solar panels, which doesn't include the maintenance rooms. So, it's really gonna be more than like 5,200 acres of- of crop and pasture land removed from production. Secretary of Agriculture Al Rollins has stated no taxpayer dollars will be used to build industrial solar farms on farmland. However, energy is using a cute little loophole to build on farmland by using private dollars, which come from our increased electric rates to fund their projects. The power generation issue can be solved with a lot less land use at the place of need with a single three-hundred-megawatt SMR, small modular reactors, on about thirty-five acres of land. Originally, I heard solar power output was supposed to be a total of one thousand two hundred megawatts or one point two gigawatts, which with about a hundred acres plus, four SMRs can be strung together to create a twenty-four-seven base load capacity. Just like solar and wind in the beginning, initial investments are high. But once adopted, mass-produced like solar, the costs come down. But SMRs support the base load capacity needs of this nation, which there is a shortage of. Just look at California and Texas. In a www.energy.gov document, a guide to fire safety for solar systems, solar panels are known to catch fire. Improperly maintained or installed panels can catch fire. Burn droppings, dust and dirt can create hot spots, which not only degrade the output efficiency of the panel, but cause a short circuit and fire. After ten years, cabling in panels deteriorate and cause fires. Even lightning strikes can set panels on fire. And there's a lot of lightning out there, I can tell you, because I've taken a few hits. Now, let's say a solar panel catches fire or a prairie grass fire starts, which does happen. How will the volunteer fire departments be able to gain access to the fire? Will fenced-in area gates be locked? Probably yes. And if there are no fences, then the whitetail bucks will surely love rubbing their velvet and antlers against the panels. Now, the solar panels are always generating direct current, DC power. So who's going to disconnect the power so our volunteer firefighters are not electrocuted while pouring water or on either a solar panel fire or the grass around the panels? DC power is more dangerous than AC power. There is a hazardous carcinogenic material, cadmium telluride, incorporated into the solar panels. Not to mention beryllium and lead if the panels are not made in the United States. Around two thousand five, two thousand six, the U.S. mandated leadless solder to be used in all electronic components. So really, anything coming in from outside out of this country and doesn't have leadless solder is illegal. There are also hazardous materials in storage batteries. Battery storage sites on fire have been known to be left to burn for days with toxic fumes steaming in the air and evacuation of personnel, people living around it. It appears the fire is too hazardous and dangerous of explosions make it difficult to extinguish. Our volunteer fire departments may not have the necessary firefighting equipment nor the training to battle such hazardous fires. We, the county taxpayers, will have to pay for any new training and equipment needed by our volunteer firefighters with increased property taxes most likely. Also, is energy going to provide restitution to the fire departments and any damages to surrounding landowners' property around NHS due to fires or even severe weather damage? No, but our homeowner insurance rates will definitely go up. The flat plan presented at the open house of where the solar fields and panels will be installed left out the most important destructive part, where are the maintenance roads? When those roads are created, they will be subject to washouts, which the soil will eventually find its way into Melbourne, Lake and our drinking water. There will be removal of topsoil for the roads and the heavy equipment to construct the entire NHS fields will disturb a highly erodible soil, according to the USDA NRCS website, further creating silting problems. The wind and water erosion of the soil from normal weather already is bad enough. That is five tons per acre per year without an industrial solar farm creating more erosion, especially a project that keeps growing in size. Phase one's thirty-eight-hundred acres of solar panels is an erosion of nineteen thousand tons per year. But the true land use is fifty-two-hundred acres creating twenty-six thousand tons of erosion. And we do have very highly erodible soil in this county. The size of this entire project seems to keep changing. Starts at thirty-eight-hundred acres of solar panels, actually fifty-two-hundred acres of land, then expands to twelve thousand, then twenty thousand, and possibly thirty thousand acres. No one will be able to live in the immediate area around NHS for long. After all those phases, the heat dome effects of a hundred-and-sixty-degree Fahrenheit radiating out from all those panels will create a massive microclimate change affecting all the landowners around NHS all year round. I've already submitted and had submitted an article about heat domes to the Osage newspaper, as well as SMRs, and about the land use. So if anybody wants to read those last ones, they can. Now, I've heard something about artificial intelligence centers needing more electricity. Trump said today that they will be building their own grids and most of them will be using SMRs to create their own. What I've heard so far from, uh, the opposition talking is it's more about money than anything else. They're the ones that are gonna make the money. If we reduce the natural gas plant shutdowns, maybe we can take care of the issue of having to wait for the SMRs to come online. SMRs will start coming online somewhere around twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty. In closing, the current moratorium on building any industrial wind, solar and battery storage in Osage County should end all discussions and requests for installing any industrial renewable energy projects in Osage County. I'll now turn it over to Susan for her comments.
So just some other things to consider. Any jobs created during the construction may generate some income for local restaurants, but the construction workers will probably be either housed in a foria or live around here already, working for a solar installation company. So where are all the new jobs? If the Pixley Solar Field near Madison Lot is, is an indication, the promised jobs for maintaining the solar field will be only a few people. How does energy really plan to maintain our farmland integrity when it's covered with solar panels? This industrial solar field will remove thousands of acres of crop and pasture land out of production. I have heard this farm would be here for thirty to forty years, and then what, farm? A restoration of the land can never be fully successful because once native grasses are removed, they can't be replaced and crops definitely won't grow the same. How is energy protecting landowner rights and our rural heritage and ice with an eyesore like this industrial solar farm in our face? Setback from houses doesn't mean it's completely out of sight. It would be interesting to hear what the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks would say about the environmental and wildlife impacts on livestock, aquatics, deer, prairie chickens, coyotes, and all nesting areas in the entire NHS area, as well as all future additions. NHS alone will drastically impact the migration patterns for all wild game, whitetail deer, prairie chickens, geese, ducks and coyotes. The exceptional hunting in this affected area will be reduced and eliminated for a very, very long time. Imagine the effects on twenty to thirty thousand acres of land. When tornadoes or other severe weather damages NHS and spreads the debris outside of NHS onto surrounding landowners' property, is energy going to clean up the landowner's property and dispose of the debris? Or pay for all the damage that's been done when the cattle can't be there and the profits that are lost? I seriously doubt it. So the current moratorium on building any industrial wind, solar and battery storage in Osage County should end all discussions and requests for installing any industrial renewable energy projects in the county. Currently in Barclay Township, there is a protest petition ready to be signed by over fifty percent of the residents. So just another few thoughts that I have that, you know, some of you have probably heard before, but they can't be revisited. You reap what you sow. I can't see any benefits reaped from this. Crop's gone, grass gone, food not produced here. My dad had a lot of sayings, was a very wise person. And he said, there's only so much land. They aren't making any more of it. I think this is true, and my son will be a fifth-generation farmer in Osage and Coffee Counties. God told us to be good stewards of the land. This is also what I was taught, and there's no jealousy here. The risk isn't worth the reward. Where is there even a reward? Lost land, your deed signed over to the, to energy, relationship severed, not following the golden rule of doing unto others as you would want them to do unto you. Climate's changing, paying for energy we don't need to be transported to those who do, so energy can profit. Let's put common sense over greed so Osage County won't be known as the solar wasteland of Kansas.
Thank you.
I mean, it could go on some.
Yeah. At this time, you do a five-minute second. At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Ah, sweet.
Evergy representatives. Please state your names, everyone else has done.
Good evening, I'm Dave Norton. And I'm Ray McSally of Evergy. I'm the commissioner, so I'm allowed just to come here and speak tonight. Talking about an opportunity that we may be able to work together on. Presentation, and I think she's working to put it on the board, so it's not just the five of us here going through the PowerPoint together with no one else understanding what we're talking about, so if you don't mind.
Technical difficulties.
We've got Sam here. IP purposes.
You know, that is all for my sake.
I stole it from my wife's office. Liberate.
First, that H G Mykore is in. Do you know the H G Mykore that's usually over here?
Isn't that for anyone?
Other duties.
You know how to fix that stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
All right, well, in an effort to fill the airspace, I'd just like to say thank you, everybody, for coming, both sides, I don't care which side you're on. And I really do appreciate the decorum that has been shared tonight. It is really encouraging, especially in this day and age, to be able to see people not be at each other's throats. I mean, in a very real, physical sense. It's troubling times we live in, and I do like to see, you know, democracy, democratic republic, being carried out here. You know, the only authority the government has, you know, the government has is by the permission of the governed. And so it is important for us to hear your guys' opinions and hear you. But it's also appropriate and probably, I would say, necessary for the government to listen to opportunities, because we all hate taxes. So, I mean, it's important to listen to these type of things, whether you agree with them or not. We wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't give opportunity to look at ways to increase revenue or generate other revenue sources. But I really do appreciate what has taken place here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Dave's my colleague, I'm Ray. A little bit about me, I've been with Evergy for 28 years now. I started out at Jeffrey Energy Center coal plant, then I moved to the Wolf Creek Energy Center coal plant. And then when I graduated from KU, I moved to downtown Topeka. And I started working in the resource planning department. So, what resources we're going to bring on tomorrow, how much they're going to cost, what's the best for customers when we do the markets. And then from there, I did various things. And then about eight, nine, 10 years ago, I started working on large scale renewable wholesale contracts. So, if it was a wind farm that it was procured for some reason, whether it was an RPS standard or something like that, I would run negotiations with the people building the facilities, and then eventually started working on developing projects like this, because we saw things that we liked, things that we didn't like. There's opportunities to save money for our customers to do things on their own and find opportunities like this. So, Evergy, what about Evergy? Evergy's a conglomerate. We were KGNL, we were KG&E, we were St. Joe Power and Light, Missouri Public Service, Kansas City Power and Light, we do lots of things. All of those now have combined to become Evergy. So, through all of these mergers and acquisitions, we now serve almost 2 million customers, 1.7 million customers is what we have. We go by three tenants, so we're on the second slide, the last slide right there. This is what we go by. Core tenants of Evergy, affordability, reliability, and sustainability. A little bit about each one of those, reliability, we want the lights on, they need to be on. That's the most important thing to every utility and everyone who's a customer of the utility. I pay for this service, I want the service to be there when I need it at the most difficult times and even the times that aren't difficult. Sustainable, sustainable means different things to different people, but what it means here is Evergy's been in business for over 125 years. We have served our customers for over 125 years. Sustainability means we really want to serve for another 125 years and be on that. Sustainable means what can we put in place to make this grid reliable for all of our customers, so we can continue to do what we do? Affordability, we have so many people that we have to go talk with, discuss with, when it comes to new projects, we don't just go build them willingly. We have to go talk, and we have to prove that this is good for our customers and overall for our company. We want to move the slide to... That's where we serve. Now, every little lick and cranny in there, inside the green box or the orange box, we don't serve. There's also co-ops and municipalities inside of that. But in general, throughout their own, only 7 million customers are inside those areas. The other thing to note on that is that's all of our generation that we help and operate out of. Notice what all that is, all that weeds out there in western Kansas, our power plants are closer to home. What's really cool about that is the several new plants that were just announced and approved by the commissioners are on there as well. You can see two of them over there in the Wichita area, one's up by Effington, and one's just south of Wichita, two gas plants. Look, those combined is over a gig and a half of natural gas, combined cycles that we plan to run as baseload for our customers. And all of the above energy approach. In north Missouri, you'll see another gas plant that's been added, that's a CT, 490 megawatts, I believe, or 10 megawatts of natural gas. Now, that's more of a peak plant, so maybe not the baseload, but when energy gets high and use is high and prices are high, we start running that facility. And then we also had three solar facilities that were approved. One's in Wilson County, not too far from here. We had another one approved in Douglas County. And then another one that was just north, Joppa, Missouri. Blanket on the counter right now.
Missouri?
Yeah. But that is 100 megawatt associated here. So, those were approved by the commissioners as well as approved for our customers. If we go to the next slide, you can see what our 1.7 million customer base is. Of the energy use, it's interesting what the numbers say and what the statistics say, right? So, of the numbers that are on that screen, 43% of all of our energy sales go to 200,000 customers. So, our commercial customers use a lot of energy. There's only 6,000 industrial customers, and you can see they use 20% of the energy. They use a lot of the energy, so around 65% of our energy goes to our commercial industrial customers. The rest serves the 1.5 million residential customers. When we talk about economic development and growth in our territory, what we're really looking at is those two on the right, but we need that stuff on the left, too. Because when we bring economic development, we can supply them the energy that they need to grow their business, then that number on the left grows. And all three of those numbers growing together helps all of us. It helps our territory as well, it helps our business, it helps the counties, it helps the places we do business in. Everybody is better off when all three of them grow together. And it takes all three of them to help them grow. If the two on the right start falling back, then the numbers on the left start falling back. So, that's really what we're looking at. How can we affordably and reliably serve all of these customers in a sustainable fashion? So, how do we do that? That's the next slide. Our energy mix, look at 2005. We were almost, we were over 50% coal, and then almost 40% gas, and then the rest of the energy came from our new facility. Every single one of them absolutely important. But when we're reliant on just two or three technologies, what that means is we're at risk. I can remember when I was working downtown in the 2000s, and it was flooding to the north, and they shut down the railroads, and we went into coal conservation. Can you imagine what coal conservation does to energy prices? Our portfolio is over 50% coal, and this was happening during the summer. We know when it floods, it floods in the spring, and it trickles over to the summer. So, we're completely reliant on our diesel and natural gas at that point, and we didn't even happen to have some coal conservation. So, at night, we were importing a lot of energy to save our coal, and then we were generating coal during a few times, very conservatively. We learned from that, natural gas, we know it moves. All of these are taken into account when you are resource planning. Like to move to the 2040, you know, on the right. If you look at that, it's a much more diversified portfolio. There's wind, there's solar, there's natural gas, there's nuclear, there's other baseload units we haven't figured out yet. All of that stuff is over there that we want to look for and continue to grow. And you've seen last week, we did announce an understanding with a nuclear company to talk about what it would have worked here. And it's working with the state, it's working with our customers, and it's working with Diversification, I think, is a good deal for the big sector.
Can you speak up a little bit?
I'm not going to demand somebody speak up. If you'd like for the gentleman to speak up, you can kindly ask him to.
Would you probably speak up some more?
Yeah.
I'll do my best. Next slide, please. So, what is solar energy? Solar energy is what you see right there on the page in that picture. It is steel, and it is solar panels, and then there's some transformers in there. We have transformers in our neighborhoods. This is nothing new. There's no new technology here. Solar panels have been around since the 50s and 60s of this size. They've been around for a very long time. It's not a new tech. It's not new by any stretch of the imagination. Steel, there is steel in this, and there are electronic components. That is what this is. Solar panels, steel, and electronic components. When you think about the other technologies and how complicated they are to build and manufacture, this is one of the simplest there is. Pure and simple, one of the simplest, and one of the easiest to operate and maintain, which is a big deal when it comes to affordability for our customers. Operations and maintenance are a big focus. Ultimately, it's part of the all-in-one approach, but it's part of the all-in-one approach because of the costs that come out of building a facility like this and the lifetime costs of it. The models say this is affordable for our customers in the parts inside the portfolio. So, that's the next slide. All kinds of research out there and publications, but this is one of the cheapest forms of energy to build. Just plain and simple, with or without tax credits, it's one of the cheapest to build. It is the cheapest to maintain. Solar is there because it works inside models, affordable for our customers. All right, so that was the general overview. Why does Osage County? Osage County, it's right in the middle of our territory. We can go back to the next slide. It's right in the middle of our territory, and when we're talking about new customers coming to our territory, they're coming to the northern part of Kansas and the northwest part of Missouri. That's where the growth is right now. Our gas plants are being built out in the southwest, they're being built in Wichita, being built in northwest Missouri. I'm going to get some, most of our power plants right now are concentrated around here. Not retired, but yeah, concentrated around here. Building power plants close to our land is very important. It's much cheaper when it gets into the market. Every single power plant that Evergy helps goes into the market. Every single one of them, Jeffrey Energy Center, since the 80s, goes into the market. Wolf Creek goes into the market. All of them go into this market. This, we know different, they all have to do that. That's what regional transmission operators do. It dispatches them, it's the best that they're able to do to make it affordable for everybody. Reliability is a number one priority. So, what could happen here, why Osage County? It is central, it's integral. We do have power plants in neighboring counties. We have over 200 employees that live in Osage County, they work for Evergy now. We serve over 2,000 customers in Osage County, so Evergy has a presence in Osage County as well. When we get to the tax dollars, I'll talk about it a little bit more, but I believe last year Evergy paid over $2 million in tax dollars to Osage County, based on the infrastructure that we already have in place. The other thing that's super important is that High Volage Line. And we'll see when we get to the project that access to those transmission lines is a big deal, and not everywhere. And whether it could be used here is pretty important. More than Harry's solar. This slide is there just to show you a project that was built down in Humboldt, Kansas. Evergy built a 20-megawatt project in Humboldt, right beside the cement plant that's down there, across the creek from it. You can see how low profile they are. If you go north of town, that's a different type. North of Osage City, when we build, that's a different type of structure than we'd be looking at here. These are single panels, although that's steel, and they rotate with the sun, they rotate back and forth with the sun. You can see there's grass growing under the panels, around the panels, in the panels. So, we're talking about keeping native grass and plants there, that's very important for us to, maintaining the fields in the proper manner. That's everything, that's the biggest part of the O N M. Expensive, these projects, taking care of the land. The next slide is the land. So, when we really talk about Osage County, first, we have to have willing landowners. And we do have willing landowners. Willing landowners that did their research to understand what solar is and what it can mean. Not just for the financial reasons, but also what it can mean for sustainability, for land when the panels are gone. You know, who's going to take care of the land? Is it going to work with the company that may or may not, or is it going to work with the company that's going to take care of the land? It always has to take care of the land, because, and I'll show you later, all of the people who maintain and monitor all of the stuff that we do. We're also looking for facilities in different parts of the state. It's not just this facility. Right now, in our resource plan, we have over 2,500 megawatts of solar that we want to build in the next 10 years. This is important, and that can work, so if it's an opportunity that you'd like to explore. There are not any spots where we can build a facility this big where there isn't a single house inside of that quarter mile line outside of those panels. So, that green line you see there is a quarter mile away from every panel. There is not a single residence inside of that green line. That does not happen really anywhere on any of the projects we're looking at. That's a big deal here, and these landowners did their research to try to do that. Now, if I make that line a half mile, there's less than 18 residences inside that half mile line. That also is very rare in all of the projects it's possible to look at. The other thing that we run into is this land, it just depends on where we go. Sometimes use farmland, someone don't use farmland, sometimes use grassland, don't use grassland. One thing that's really important for us is working with our environmental team and our environmental partners at the state and federal level to understand the impacts that these have. There is traditional land that's leased, but we don't want to use that land, we're not going to use that land, and we wouldn't recommend using that land, because it is pristine land. So, we try to minimize that as much as possible. And when we work with the institutions and the Kansas Wildlife Departments and the Health Departments, all of those things come into play or are impacted by the O N M. The two dots, the purple dots you see, the two little stars, kind of like a state, kind of small. The star that's on the northeast, the northeast star is sitting there, that's where we would put a substation, so we call that a collector's substation. That substation will be right there, and you can see it's in the middle of the panels, and there are no houses, that's the middle of the project. Houses are so far away from that residence, residential link act, not there for that substation facility. And it also is important to be right there, because we can tie right into that transmission line. We don't have to build a transmission line anywhere in the county. Just sit right there at that substation. The other purple dot you see is where we propose putting an O N M building. We would have a small O N M building that would be able to store panels and equipment in, or holding equipment, for example, we go over there. I'll let you take it aside.
Yeah, one thing to note, the blue is where the panels are. That is roughly 2,000 acres. 2040 is roughly 2,000 acres. There are no plans to, at this time, make it any bigger than 2,000 acres. There are no plans to put battery, there are no plans to put wind anywhere on this project. So, that's all we're proposing, is this one project tonight.
And I would say, thank you, Dave, because I think that's important to be out there. We're not proposing a project tonight, we're talking about an opportunity. I just wanted to make that clear. We're just talking about this is what we're looking at, the type of research that we've done with some of our employees. Next slide. So, there's another picture of that Humboldt facility in the CDM, that's just really emphasizing the grasses. This side was a little different than what we're looking at here. When we look at the side we just looked at, we're not putting that in areas where there's major tree growth, we're not putting it in areas where there's streams, so that's why you see different holes in different places. We want to go in the areas where we won't have to cut that stuff out and then put some So, when we're talking about the native grasses going away or being desecrated or destroyed, they're not, we don't love it. The racking that we put in place actually follows the contour of the land. If you went to one of the earlier slides that had a solar facility from the air, that follows some of the craziest hills that I've ever seen, all right there, we didn't have to destroy the land to put that in, or the grasses, we built right away from the northwest. So, talking about the Barclay Township is where we were. We found an area where there isn't a residence within a quarter mile of any panel. You get confused sometimes when people are talking about phases. Alls we're looking at here is 500 megawatts total. That would be across two phases, so we would build half of that, connect it to the grid, and then while we're building the other half, we're getting that fully commissioned and install service, and then the other half would come on a year or two later. That's why it says two phases. And some of the reasons for that is because we have customers coming now, they need power now, and that gives us the possibility to serve them much sooner rather than building for all 500 megawatts. The reason that that last sentence is there is no plans for additional projects in Osage County at this time, is the gentleman over there talked about it, made a great point about what about natural gas, what about nuclear? We have counties that want to do business with us, and we have good partnerships with them. All of these things come into play. There is a great natural gas pipeline in that, that runs through the county, and has a great opportunity for us as well. So, when we talk about that, as we draw our partnerships, those things... Um, so when we talk about that, as we, as we draw our partnerships, those things, um, we talk about here, those are coming into play. The next slide. Kind of just reiterates some of the things that we talked about. Five hundred megawatts total, so let's talk about the five hundred megawatts it is. Because it took me forever to understand what five hundred megawatts meant. But fifty thousand hours would be served by this five, so five hundred megawatts over a year produces this many megawatt hours. Some of the working energy industry know what that means, others don't. And you know that when we pay our bills, we're paying a kill one hour rate. This is in a megawatt hour rate. Five hundred megawatts is roughly two thirds the size of one Jeffrey Energy Center. So one, there's three plants at Jeffrey, one plant is close to eight hundred megawatts. This would be five hundred megawatts. We talk about efficiencies and net capacity factors. Five hundred megawatts, what that means is when the sun's shining, form, right? Five hundred megawatts is being pushed on the grid. When it's nighttime, there's zero megawatts being pushed on the grid. On December twenty-first, when it's sunny, there's five hundred megawatts being pushed on the grid. When it's dark, there's zero megawatts being pushed on the grid. So when we talk about net capacity factor, that's what we're talking about. So we say it's a four percent net capacity factor. It's producing energy, uh, at different levels, twenty-five percent of the energy potential is produced. That's what that means. That's taken into account when we do our research plan. So those things matter to us, and that's why some of these technologies were developed. That's why they created trackers. It's produced quite the same as tracking technology. Those are all the things, uh, in the plan and in the model. Now, construction could start as early as twenty-seven, that's just because things are available. That's just if there were no other county things or anything like that, that you had to work to put in any or anything like that. All that is is saying that if everything else were in place, twenty-seven is where it is. And it takes us about two years to build these projects. Okay, why, why are we considering this? First and foremost, this is the next slide. This is a power plant. This is a power plant. This isn't a renewable saving the world thing, this is a power plant. There are benefits to this type of power plant, this is a power plant. There is real steel here. There are real mines carrying electricity here. This is real. When we build power plants in communities, there's a reason that there is a property tax, because these are real. And they create real opportunities for everyone. They create opportunities for Evergy, but they also create opportunities for the county and everyone who lives in the county. Partnerships and community are big for Evergy. I live in a community that has a power plant. I grew up in a community that my schools were funded because there was a big coal plant outside of it. I had great schooling and I had a great, um, facility that I had to go to. Evergy funded a lot of that when I grew up. This one right here, that hundred million perfa, so if we just built two hundred and fifty megawatts, just half of it, those are the projections we have, that it would generate in tax dollars over thirty years that would be in production. Evergy pays taxes, those are real dollars. We talk about pilot payments. Yes, the first ten years are tax exempt. If we're going to build a natural gas plant, the first ten years are tax exempt. So for all of our projects that we're building, we are doing pilots. And we do want to negotiate pilots, not just with the county, but other people that, that we needed as well. So if we need to go directly to the schools, we go directly to the schools. If we need to go directly to the fire departments, we go directly to the fire departments. Uh, we'll do the topics about the maintenance agreements that we fielded right with the township dogs. So any roads that we want to use, we do it up to the standard that they need to be to whoever the materials, and then we leave them in that shape after construction that they were before we started construction. All of that would be in the, in the documents and the contracts that we would develop with the townships. And if there's any county roads that would be impacted, that would be as well. If you think back to that map, we actually have a route where our construction traffic would pass a single house once it got into the townships. So that's Grand Township, and that's the bottom of the township. We found a path and we could build the roads out, and we wouldn't pass a single house to get to that substation, no, no. We could do that, and we've, we've worked, and we've worked to find some site. We don't have any projects where that happens either. This is kind of unique, now when it comes to that. Uh, so the tax revenue, a hundred million dollars is equivalent to roughly two thousand houses. So if the full project was built, you're giving tax revenue for about the four thousand houses. Here's what's interesting about that. If you were to build four thousand houses, then you've got to spend your money to build more schools and more roads. All of the infrastructure would have to go to expanding everything to accommodate that. That's not what this does. This is money that you get to use to build the infrastructure you need and own now. Because this is just, you know, it's a handful of people that would be doing it now. It's, it's a big deal. We're going to take care of the land, and we won't take care of the facilities. But when it comes to the jobs, the jobs are just construction jobs. And then when it comes to O and M, it's not going to take a lot of infrastructure to do that. So those dollars are for you guys to spend. Pilot payments is the same thing. Which, the next slide. Talks a little bit about jobs, what it can mean, construction jobs. I had an interesting discussion with, um, one of the builders, an EPC contractor. You know, one of the things that they talked about, and I didn't think about this, but we do hire EPCs to, to build our facilities. Uh, EPC being engineering, technical, construction firms. So we are a construction firm that builds. The construction firms, when they do build, they're using workers from around here. They will hire from around here. And if they're good, they'll stay on with the company. And that company will use them to build other projects in the area, not just solar, but other projects. So it does bring that type of job, though. What else is it? It does support local businesses while it's in construction. And it's not just around OCE County, it will be all of the counties around that are supporting. Probably the biggest thing, I want to talk about that lower right-hand corner. The solar facility itself isn't going to attract business around the economic competitiveness. It might, it might be something to go talk to the customer and say, hey, we have one of the largest solar facilities in the area. But really what it does is it raises revenues for you guys to, to really put some effort behind it, attracting other businesses and customers in the area. So now you've got a real economic engine to go, to go bring people in, contract with other resources. I think on this slide, I, I really want to focus on just a couple bullets, and, and the third one is a big deal. It is illegal in the state of Kansas to use eminent domain to build a solar facility. So anything that happens has to be included in the numbers and counts. They have to be valid. If, if they're not known, then it doesn't happen, and that's okay. That's okay. But it's not going to be a take or a land grab. It just can't happen that way when it comes to solar. It's not a thing that can happen. So everyone knowing, everyone wanting, is really how that works. So it's, you know, it's in our benefit to be an opportunity for both. The other thing, I talked about the road maintenance agreement, I was kind of focused on that one on this slide, but, um, I think we already touched on that one. I think the, the other one I want to talk about maybe then is, uh, the fourth one about respecting the role of Evergy. Evergy's made up of farmers. Evergy's made up of people who live in cities. Evergy's made up of everybody. Uh, you can see Evergy, employees, and all of these. Uh, we hire environmentalists, we hire engineers, we hire economists, we hire from all, um, I don't know how to say it, whatever degree you have or, or don't have, we hire that. And make care of it. Because we live in the communities that we have these projects, so it really means something. Not everybody that can sit here and say that, but we do live in the communities that we work in. We're monitored by every single person you can think of, uh, when it comes to, uh, law of life and parks, when it comes to fish and wildlife service. I may touch on panel toxicity here. So, one of the first things we did when we wanted to start building solar was talk to Department of Law and Life and Parks and Fish and Wildlife and KDHE. Study, study, studies. When we talk about building a farmland, well, these are reasons to do it, and things that you need to do if you are going to do that. If you're going to build in grazing land, these are things to do, these are people to talk to, this is how you do it. These are things that we put in place to protect everything. Our own biologists, these are the things that we plant in the panels, around the panels to do several things. One, make the ground more healthy than when we left, or when, when we leave and when we started. Two, eliminate some of these risks like fire. Things that we plant matter. What stays green longer? What really gets its roots in the ground, uh, to, to maintain its health? So it's not just barren land, we want these things to thrive. How do we, how do we build different things for, let's say we bring in sheep? Well, that's a different mix that we use there. If it's cattle, it's a different mix that we bring there. All of these things, they want to work on, we want to work on, and we all work on. Environmental conservation is a big deal for Evergy. We do it everywhere, we do it all the time, and we're monitored on all of these things. It's real, and we employ people to do these things. The last bullet there I haven't even touched, is I did say this is a power plant. This is one of the few power plants where when we get a fuel source that goes into it, it's not emitting anything, uh, into the environment. Natural gas, we use carbon dioxide and a few other things, coal, same thing. Uh, when we, solar panels absorb that energy, it comes out, there's no emissions to this. That's a big deal, that's a big deal for us, and it's a big deal for our customers as well. This is new and exhaustive. This is just a portion of all of the people that we talk to when we start building projects. When we talk about reliability, you see, uh, North American Regulatory Commission. It says FERC beside it, but that should be NERC. So what NERC does is NERC maintains that this power plant needs to produce clean energy. And when I say clean, it can't hurt the grid. So it needs to produce energy in a good enough fashion that it doesn't hurt the frequency, it doesn't hurt, um, bars or anything like that. It really has to produce a clean energy source for the wires, so we don't destroy anything in the area. We maintain things that we have to follow their standards. Uh, when we talk about FERC, we have to follow FERC rules as well, that's Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. OSHA requirements means how safe are, uh, the construction site and how safe is the, uh, safe is the operations site? KDHE is going to monitor everything we put in the ground, everything we put in the air, all of that stuff. Uh, stormwater permitting, all of those things. Yeah, not exhaustive here. Um, we have to talk to a lot of people to build these projects, a lot of people eyes on this. Next slide please. This kind of just talks about all the things that we talked about before, but what I have in hand here is the severe weather. So that's, that's real. I've grown, I've lived in the, by fifty years old, Dave, I've lived in this state my entire life. I know that there is hail, I know that there are tornadoes, I know there's rain, I know there's wind. I know that, and I thought the same things about this. We've built solar facilities around the state, we've built solar facilities in other states. We've seen them, how they react to the storm, we've seen things that we like, we've seen things that we don't like. So we've practiced, we've looked, and these things are more resilient than I ever thought they would be. And they just keep getting more resilient as we build more. That is real steel in the ground holding these things in place. That is real steel. These panels, uh, if you did come to the open house, you'd simply pound on it, they're a fist. They are strong, they're not just weak. They are real panels that are made to withstand two millimeter, right?
Yes.
No.
And they're able, they're able to detect and stone when the storm is coming, we can control the everything, and they will turn it at an angle to where the hail lenses off and then it's a break hit. And that's proactive, so that's a very important city of the future as well.
I think that's a big deal. The other thing that we look at is, we built some of these that were right next to the ground, uh, and now we've started building them higher. So what that does is that has more affordability. But then we have to think, well, you can't put them too high, because then you've got to worry about the wind, because they do become sails and that way. So we're trying to find that maximum load, and we've found it. Nothing's perfect, never nothing's ever done perfectly, but we think we found a good spot, we have good ag and good protection from these crazy storms that we get. When we do get a storm and something does happen, cleaning it is absolutely our responsibility. It's not just the county or anyone else. We've got the Kansas Corporation Commission sitting there just want to say, you don't clean this up, and you don't do the threat. We've got the KDHE sitting there saying, this is your deal, you don't clean it up. Uh, there's more people to hold this accountable than most businesses in the state.
Yeah, that's one of the things I'd like to hit on too, is when we do have something that happens, something dangerous, we need this project for energy for our customers, so we're going to get it back online as quick as possible because this power is for our customers. We're not planning on sending it out to states, to California, it is for our customers. We need our plans, the plan that Brandon showed, where we need all of the approach. We really do need to get this back online as soon as possible, so it will be our responsibility to make sure we do.
And when we look at, you know, panel integrity, uh, one of the things that we've been working lately is infrared scans, which, that's crazy, I'm going too deep into that, you know, and stuff like that. It's pretty crazy though, when you do an O and M scan, I can spot a panel from a seat of panels. There's a hotspot, our, our maintenance guy gets out to black voiding it. It's not something that just sits and lasts during some periods of time. That's what we do is we maintain a lot of time. The next slide, how solar works. I don't have to spend much time on this, it's just there if you want to go back to it and see. But really, the solar panel absorbs the sun rays, it, uh, excites some atoms and stuff like that, and then flows out as DC energy, diverted AC energy, and add on to the grid. Probably the biggest thing here is emission free to do. Next slide. When we call these things, it's, I mean, when we talk about some things that people say about solar farms, full of solar facilities, again, it's a solar power plant. It is a power plant. So we're going to call it a solar power plant, a solar facility. Blair, noise, the environment, farmland, there's more. This is, this is not an exhaustive list either, there's lots of things that we can talk about. These are the first few we want to talk about. Next slide. This may be one of the quietest power plants you would ever be stand next to. And merge makes some noise. If you've got a transformer in your yard, you've seen those green boxes out in your yard where the power from the city or from the coverage comes in, those can get a little noisy even when it's hot out, and they're really gross and hard to wait. That's what we're talking about here on the generators. Things do generate a little noise, and it's that, the way we do this is we make it so it's, it's just ambient noise by the time it gets to the edge of the facility. If you're standing right next to it, you can hear it. If you get to the edge of the facility, the way we build these is you can't discern the rest of the noise that's in the area. And that's even wind and whatever, it's out. Blair. Blair's a big deal, they're building these next to airports. They're building these right on the airport property. So when we talk about flare, these things are following the sun. So it's not sitting there at a weird angle and reflecting it off, it's trying to absorb as much energy as it can from that sun and follow it, uh, as it looks through the day. Next slide, the number two. It's a power plant. It is real steel, and it is real solar panels, so I'm not going to say it's not, it is, it's a big deal. And that's why there is that, an opportunity and a benefit to the county and to the townships for having it there. You're hosting a real power plant, and there's real tax dollars, that's why the tax dollars are there. Um, that's why we support the community in other ways, that's why we hire people in the area to work for Evergy. It is a real power plant. By working with our biologists, with our environmentalists, with all of our partners across the state and across the federal, uh, landscape, we try to make this a net negative impact. A net positive impact, I think you said that word, a net positive impact in the market. It's pretty easy to say that about tilled land. We're turning filled, tilled land into grassland, that's pretty easy to say, that's a positive benefit. When we take an area that's, that's grazing land and, and grassland, we have to be extra cautious and careful there to maintain the integrity of the air so we can say the same thing. All of those things, by the way, go into our decommissioning plan where we negotiate with you. We already have plenty in place for the commission, whether it's the Kansas Commission or the Missouri Commission. Uh, we already have it, or at least We already have it, or at least have an agreement with the landowners. We'd also negotiate that with you, whether that's by bonding the project or whatever. Guarantee if there's a revenue source and a proper way to decommission this power plant. That's part of everything that's been in place. Farmland. One of the things we committed to in our going to this county facility was to make sure that we're always moving forward with agricultural tanks. I just learned how to say that word. I forgot this on the first time. I forget about that. Agricultural tanks is real. It is real. You can see it all across the country. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to have a voice. The cool thing about the landowners is they're already farmers. They already know how to take care of the land. And we will work with them and we want to work with them to continue taking care of the land and make it dual purpose. It can do both. It can be a solar facility. It can be a solar power plant. It could also raise agriculture. It can also produce, it could produce sheep. It could produce hay. All of these things are possible if we do it the right way. We have to be responsible in the way that we do it. That doesn't mean solar is the only thing we're going to build in Evergy. We're going to build natural gas. We're partnering to potentially build another big power plant. We're going to build other baseloads as it becomes a thing to do. All of it is needed. Be all above, all of the above energy approach. All of it is necessary. This thing right here, solar, is there when it's 105 degrees. And it's hot and it's sunny, it's there. When it's negative 10, it's 601 on December 21st, it's not there. That's why we have everything else. But this makes sense for what it does and what it does produce. So that's just a sense of the opportunity. That's the opportunity that we were looking at here in Osage County. We've been hearing all about it. We've been hearing things here and there. We didn't have anything to even talk about before tonight because all of this stuff takes time to develop, to put into place, to do the things that we did to even get to this part. I do want to take a second though to invite our development partners. Why Osage County? Because there is no part of the story, why Osage County? While we are actively looking for projects in lots of counties, lots of counties across Kansas, this opportunity came to us from a development team that's homegrown and from the state. So I'm going to invite Joe Arva to talk for a couple of minutes about why you found this project, energy, and why Osage County.
Do you want a chair, sir?
No, this is fine.
Yeah, nobody wants a chair. Gives me a good reason to stop looking at that screen. There's some little messaging on there. I'll be quick here folks, but I really appreciate the time and the year. So my name is Joe Arva. I live here in Osage County. I'm trying to speak loud enough where everybody can hear. I live in Osage County. I'm a sixth generation farmer and rancher. And I'm also a power, I'm also a developer of power projects. Many people don't know that. I've been doing it for almost 20 years. I own a company called Five Thirty Six Development. Five Thirty Six is developing power plants of all different types across probably 10 different states. Everywhere from Canada down on the coast of Texas. Dozens and dozens of projects we've done, different types are up and operating. And we've got dozens right now that are in development in all these states. So we've got a lot of experience with renewable energy. We're also doing natural gas plants. We see the big picture. We very much appreciate a diverged fuel mix. So just a, a little bit of background here, I guess. We did initiate this project with the local landowners. There's actually five local landowner families, all of which live here and are actively farming and ranching. We are all Osage County taxpayers and live here. Our headquarters are right here in, in the Lyndon area. So, you know, we don't have to be here, but this place is near and dear to our heart. We don't have to develop here is what I'm saying. But I think our county needs it. We have, my family and I have been doing everything we can since we moved back in 2012 after K-State. And K-State is a small, stent city. We've done everything we can to try to bring our rural communities back. When I was growing up, I grew up in Melbourne. I live between Melbourne and Lyndon now. That's where we operate. When I was growing up, we had a ton of businesses in Melbourne. We had a couple of different restaurants. Oddly enough, we had two grocery stores for some period of time. Real estate business and insurance and some people sold furniture for a while. I mean, there's a lot going on. And everybody knows that it's not that way anymore. This is the reason that I got into energy development that time ago, all that, all that long ago. It's not because I was some climate fanatic thinking we needed clean energy and was going to jam down people's throats or something. I was looking at oil and gas. In fact, we are active in oil and gas as well, the Five Thirty Six Development. I was looking at oil and gas and I was looking at renewable energy and we've been doing it all ever since. And it's because there's nothing else that can inject the kind of money into these communities to keep them alive. There's just nothing else that can do it. Ag can't sustain everything we need anymore. I love ag. It's my true passion. This is work, right? So some of what I'm going to say here is a little bit redundant with Brandon, so I'll try to be really quick. You know, why solar? He said it. Solar's cheap. It's, it just is. That's the truth. Incentives are not, I'll show my own political covers, colors here. I'm not speaking on behalf of Evergy here. I wish the incentives would go away. Take them out of energy, take them out of oil and gas, take them out of wind, solar, take them out of ag for that matter. There's too much government intervention and big regulation in our world. So solar's cheap. Also, it is, it's just another tool. As a farmer, we know that we don't need, we need a lot more tools than just like a big heavy horsepower, $200,000 tractor, right? Sometimes all you need is a little tractor to pull the rake or move hay or skid steer or something. It can frankly save a lot of money so you don't have to buy another big expensive tractor. That's what, that's all solar is. It's cheap energy. We know we need baseload. We know we need dispatchable energy. But we need cheap electrons or everybody's power prices go up. Yes, I know they're rate big, rate increases. Everybody's doing rate increases all over the country and everything else. I mean, inflation's crazy no matter what you're doing. And it's worth mentioning, Evergy's rates are very competitive with the, with the rest of the country. We brought Evergy in not just because they were local, but they are an incredible company. They do a great job. I think they should be applauded for making good profits. They are highly regulated in terms of their rates. There's a board, the Kansas Corporation Commission. And there's all kinds of nonprofit boards, industry players that fight them if their rates get too high. So here, Evergy is trying to keep rates lower. And you think, to say anything else is, it's just simply not true. We touched on this a lot tonight, but it is wild. The, the demand for power right now is, is completely historic. It's never been like this. We need all forms. Solar, why solar? Solar is safe. There's just, I think there's something like 6 billion panels in the world operating or something like that. I mean, nobody knows the exact number. But we're, you can't find any evidence of any, you know, water pollution, anything like that. I mean, they, they truly are safe. I'll just keep rolling and not dwell on that. But why here? They talked about it. Low proximity. You can't, we don't have desert here. You're not going to get to the scale or the economics you need if you put it on a rooftop or if you put it on carports. We can't put it in western Kansas because it's going to cost too much to transmit it here. There's transmission congestion. So we need solar and we need it in eastern Kansas. When you start checking the boxes, you have to have power lines and all these things. This is one of the only places in eastern Kansas, and I mean, maybe the only, certainly you count on one hand, that can create the project size that it can, that has a transmission line running through it that can take the power. There's a lot of analysis and studies that goes into, well, where can you put it where it doesn't break the grid? The lines are already overloaded. There has been dozens and dozens of developers coming to Osage County because it checks all these boxes. These, these people know what they're doing all across the country. I've, in, in my, my past life, I was vice president, head of development for a, a really big energy development company. They saw Osage County as an organization and frankly wanted to put a wind project in the northern part of the county. To which I actually fought myself hard internally because I didn't think wind made sense in northern Osage County. And I know not everybody agrees with that. I think there's great wind projects and there's bad wind projects. I think there's great solar projects and bad solar projects. It depends on how they're sited and where you put them. Same thing comes with gas, coal, whatever. So here, you've got the capacity on the transmission lines. You have the demand. You've got frankly pretty marginal farmland and grass, in low value grass. It's actually a great place for it. And like they said, the fact that there aren't homes in, within the project polygon is like, that could never happen almost like in this way and still be as close to live. So I'm trying to be quick here. What, what I would ask is that you consider reasonable regulations here. I, I think you guys are all Republicans, right? This is, these are political positions. And like you, I believe in free markets. I believe in reasonable amounts of government regulations. Believe in landowner rights and that's important. We can, we, we need to be mindful about neighbors. We have to do everything we can to make it to where they can't see the project. I honestly think there's going to be, on, on one hand, you'll be able to count on one hand, the number of people who will actually be able to see this project. And I think they need taken care of. Something, they need, Evergy needs to talk to those people, right? So if you can do that, if you can put reasonable regulations in place, I'm not saying open the county up for everything. Your townships have 10 times the population of Barkley Township. I don't think that's a great place for anything, frankly, of, of any large scale. But don't, don't say no to this opportunity because of fear. Like let's have dialogue, have a working session if we have to. And if there's a, I have a whole list of concerns that came out and I want to answer every single one of them. And I want, and I want to provide documentation for it, but we don't have time for that. But if there's still concerns, man, get a working session together. Get a roundtable, put it public for everybody. You guys can moderate it. And long form dialogue can answer a lot of these questions. If Evergy can't mitigate you all's concerns after a discussion like that, get them out of here, right? But let reasonable people that know the industry answer questions with facts before you just say no. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking this from the bottom of my heart. I have four kids here. I want them to come back. I want what Coffey County has. I do. And, you know, villainize money if you want. But 50 years ago, this is my understanding, I wasn't around, 50 years ago, Evergy wanted to put a new plant in Osage County. And we said no, as I understand it, it was to be sited around Quimbo. And which wouldn't be too far from where I live. We know the story though. They went to Coffey County, one of the poorest counties in the state, and it's one of the greatest rags, richest stories we have. Look at their facilities. Look at the, the rec center and the people it brings in and the football. I was down there Saturday and just, it's really neat what they've got going down there with all their infrastructure and their facilities. I want that for our kids. So please, consider, give Evergy a shot here. I really think they're good people and they're doing everything they can to do this right. And I think it's going to be, I think it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you for the year.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That concludes the Evergy presentation and the discussion on this. At this time, I'd like to open it up. Comments from my fellow commissioners. If you have any questions for anybody. Now would be a good time, if you want to reserve questions and do some more research, maybe reach out to them privately, have a discussion, that's fine too. But at this time, Heather, do you have any questions for anybody that spoke?
I think I know the answer on a couple of these. The project hasn't started because sometimes I have people calling me and asking me if it's started because they see activity down there. And I'm like, not that I know of. And there hasn't been anything that you're doing that requires permitting? Okay. And the, you filed your permits with KCC? Or who's the regulatory body that you have to file permits with? Not us, but prior to start a project.
Oh, you mean who would be part of all of the?
I'm not sure. When you called me last summer, you had told me that you were the one that had filed some permits.
No permit. You're talking about a generation interconnection reservation, which is a southwest power.
Okay, maybe that was it.
Southwest power.
Okay.
And all that does is it's just a study that says that the transmission line can handle that one.
Okay.
And what it takes to be able to handle. We have gotten a few, a little bit of feedback and they can handle big ones. Without having to build any infrastructure.
Do you have a question?
No.
Mr. Smith?
I just really enjoy you guys coming to this forum and talking about it, other than, you know, I understand there were some public invites that went out to different forums and I didn't attend any of those. But I just appreciate you guys showing up to this. It can be, you know, a public forum. So I appreciate it. Thanks for coming into what might have felt like a hostile environment, but believe me, I know a lot of these folks and everybody wants the best for the county. I mean, they're, we're, we're taking different paths, but we all want the same end game.
Good?
I'd like to say the same thing. Thank you guys for bringing this up to the forefront. Thank you for, you know, what you're doing and trying to help us better our county. To the people that don't want the solar, man, I appreciate you guys too. You might not believe it. I see stories on Facebook about me all the time. Sometimes they're lies, sometimes they're a joke. I don't care. I don't care. And you need to know that. So you can put anything you want out there. I appreciate you. Because it takes both sides to make a country great. If you had one side, then we'd probably be floating off somewhere and we'd have this, this world torn down and it wouldn't be worth living in. So that's my thanks to you guys. Even though you may not care for me very much and some of the things I say, I do appreciate you, okay? I do care. And all the folks that support it, I appreciate you for coming in here, voice your opinion. It's not easy. We got to sit through this. My first meeting as a commissioner was very contentious. I went home and kind of questioned what I was getting myself into. Mr. Kirk and Don's true, you're very aware of that. But we're all here for the same thing. Brandon is not wrong. We just have to find the best way to do it. Everyone knows in this county, your taxes are high. It sucks. I don't like paying them. I don't want my kids to have to pay them. So what am I going to do as a responsible representative for the people? I'm going to do what everybody else would do. I'm going to pay attention. I'm going to listen. I'm going to open up your messages that you send me and I'm going to look through all that stuff and I'm going to try to weigh everything. Because that's what a people's representative should be doing. That is what we should be doing. So if you don't like that, if, if that's not what you're here for, then this is what it is. My election's coming up here real soon. I would much rather be sitting at home right now with my wife, new wife, and not having to deal with any kind of crap. But this is a good place to be tonight. You guys all did a very good job in maintaining decorum. I do appreciate it. And thank you very much for letting this get out. And I won't rattle too much because sometimes I know I can get off the rails, but I just want everybody to understand, this is how it's supposed to be in this country. I don't know that we have any room for action tonight. I think there needs to be another discussion, maybe a couple more discussions. You've made a very good point. What are your thoughts, Mr. N? Same thing. You have any thoughts at all? You're a council and I always like to include you.
I have no thoughts.
Okay. Do you think further after my rambling?
Yes. I will say that I don't have any intention of changing my position on this, so. I guess the two of you would have to decide if you're wanting to make any changes. I don't have any intention of supporting removing the mortuary or working through getting rid of the prohibition. So I'm still in the same position as I was.
I just, I do think the topic will keep coming up in the future as far as, maybe not solar in particular, but other types of those opportunities or those, those plans. And I don't know, I'm sure it'll be revisited. There'll have to be some type of regulation talk sooner or later about, you know, you can't just have a mortuary and think it's good forever. I mean, we'll have to regulate somehow. I mean, you have zoning and regulations, planning and zoning for a reason, so. I mean, you have zoning and regulations, planning and zoning for a reason, so.
Well, Sid?
And I will echo that sentiment. One of the biggest things that bothers me about the whole decision, I listened to the wind and the solar and all, and I know everybody made the best choice they think they could make, but I have a real problem with property rights and what governments did with them. So further discussion.
It sounds like.
Okay. At this time, that is it. We're gonna move into some of our regular business. I'd like this other five commissioners home to eat dinner, but thank you again very much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said Democratic Republic.
A constitutional republic that practices democracy.
Thanks for coming. You can't put my.
I invite you guys to speak out there so we can finish our business.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it shouldn't be too.
How are ya?
Real fast. We've been there quick. I can't carry this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Did you get Fred in here?
Yeah. You gotta, BBC. You got BBC to do?
Yeah.
We're gonna try and get Fred to get. You sure you don't want that?
I better go ahead.
Were you not to hold that in? I like your blues. Allergies, you reckon?
I haven't gone back to the laser yet. I can find it down there.
I was just so.
I don't mind if you guys keep poking where we're going close.
Boy, I really close to you. Well, this is a candlestick.
Huh? I know. Were you gonna be?
And we had stepped from the rock and then.
Were you gonna, did you wanna get a bite to eat? Have you eaten?
You know, I thank you. There's the investment and disbursement agreement dated as of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, between the Osage County Kansas Public Building Commission and the investment and disbursement agent. Here's a bill from Conklin Plumbing in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Appears it's to install vanity, rooftop, faucet, water heater, generator hookup and reinstall, gas line, electrical switch over, extra labor, waterline, pipe, georhydric fittings.
Change order or something, maybe her extra work or?
Yeah, that was my question. Are you familiar with this one at all?
No.
Are you familiar with it all? They were gonna pay the bill, but I'm curious.
The way it's worded, it sounds like it was a change order or something or the.
Right. I'm really glad you brought that in here.
You're welcome.
You're about the last one.
Ha ha.
This is what I keep telling Wells. Where's he at, buddy?
Why do you think it's a change order?
Because it's all the way the, all the sort of jazz and the shit working at that.
Like something was in the way of something.
Yeah, everything's already.
Then that's probably in the extra building.
Yeah, probably.
Oh, that could be, yeah.
It's probably for the extra building.
Put an extra rester in there.
Because remember, they said they were gonna put an office out there, remember?
Installation of two caps on Lardine, original bid sold out for one tap, which we did on six feet to the side, was equipped in a red, installed two other taps after hours in which we've done one in the city. Those two tanks, four, eight, or nine, one tap.
Didn't they say they're putting like emergency management out there, they're putting office out there or something?
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
But does it say if it's for the LAC or for the storage building or whatever it was called?
I don't, it doesn't say the building, but it talks about a whole separate tap, right?
This is a water install sewer cap.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that building.
That makes sense, I forgot about that other building.
Okay, could you?
Yeah, sorry.
So I'll need a motion to approve sending the bill for thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents from Conklin Plumbing to the commission for payment.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That is the only bill, so I'll need a motion to adjourn PBC.
So move.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will resume the regularly scheduled meeting at this time. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay. Now in front of me, I need a motion to approve paying Conklin Plumbing thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents for work performed at the jail presented by the PBC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sounds jovial up there. Okay, we have.
I think, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Hey, what's that?
They better not be voting on me. He has his thing. This is our standard contract. Josh, have you seen this at all?
I have. I recommend that, well, I think it is fine for legal. It requires payment at the end of the completion of work, county data that they transmit to the county, work product becomes our property, out there, internal system, street secrets, whatever, stays theirs. And it's my understanding that they're, are they, they're not, you know, flyover.
I agree with it, it has Sheldon's aspect of Rachel's office.
Okay, it looks more like kind of helping us with the data, getting it modernized or whatever.
But the end product.
That's the same contract we signed last year.
Yeah, I just thought it was a flyover and, because we did it in another county.
It might be, it might be what, when you get online and through the link of the appraiser's office or wherever and you can look at.
Yeah, the Kimball mappings wasn't a crazy.
The last flyover one I had had pictures of the planes that are pretty used, so I didn't see.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve, let's put, signing the twenty twenty-five GIS parcel and a guy's abused map maintenance agreement with Kimball mapping. And to pay the invoice in the amount of twenty thousand and five hundred dollars at time of payment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Come here, sir.
Well, that's a good one. Nice big line there, I can see it.
Right. There's too many commissioners in line over here.
There's a lot of lines for only three commissioners.
Seriously?
How are you? I have a sneaky man against.
Who can download?
We're prepared to.
Next.
And we'll be cut off from the system and we'll be starting to.
Oh, okay.
Man, I'm getting old.
Fine. Fine.
Oh, yeah, this is, okay, I know this is, gotcha. Yeah, Brian's pretty excited about that one, so.
Is he?
Great job.
Oh, yeah, that's what we need to talk about. Who was the bills? Nobody? Everybody? Who needs to sign this?
It's approval of that.
I don't know which is this.
That's that bridge funding deal that Ryan was talking about here, just the, the last time he was in here, they didn't have the paper to sign.
This is where we were awarded a hand? Or is this just one? I can't keep track of all bridges he talks about, so.
Okay, except for the ones that fall down.
Except for the ones that fall down.
Well, I know he was here recently about possibly another one that was being funded or being awarded something for another. Is that that one?
No, this is a different one. This is a mile and a half south to a mile and a half west.
Was that one that was on the bridge bond list?
While you're in the process of signing, I need a motion to approve the project programming request brought forth by Ryan Fine in the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars for bridge one and a half miles south and one and a half miles west of Birmingham, Kansas Bridge Number Sixty-One.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Since he's signed that, I'll get you John Henry on that.
John Henry or John Hancock?
It's John Henry Hancock. I guess I'm not real sure where about that.
You guys waiting on me here?
Well, she's reviewing this temporary permit location and zoning. I don't.
It's October or eleven. Isn't that the?
Wouldn't I go through Tricia?
Isn't that the Lindenfall Festival?
Is this January, so we should go back?
For.
Whatever that address is.
Well, that's what I was looking, it says outside the city limits. Oh, yeah.
She answered everything.
Right. I don't even use a map.
Google it. Two eight, seven eight four. It says it's outside the city limits.
Seven five, it's just right north of here.
So what I'm learning by going through these is you shouldn't buy any type of watercraft because it costs a lot of paperwork.
Well, a lot of the personal property is getting removed.
Yeah.
It's at the ranch house.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, they've got that structure there that's for that stuff. Okay, uh, did you get through?
Are these all personal property or anything?
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Need a motion to approve temporary permit location and zoning for Aaron Ashford at two eight, seven eight four US seventy-five, Linden, Kansas, six six four five one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Really have a signature on it, I'm pretty sure that's approved by the. Sheldon's passed.
He's trying to figure out where he's supposed to sign that CMB there.
CMB thing?
Just temporary one, doesn't have a spot for me.
Um, those are different.
When you've done review, doesn't it make the motion to approve? If you put me some kind of?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a lawyer question in all of it? When I was in here, we got in trouble for shutting the door. And I know it was loud, but it's technically a violation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act.
Actually, I posted a sign on the outside. It says open meeting.
But I had to go to a class one time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've always interpreted it as if the door's open, just like the outside door's closed. It's a pub, it's public, it's open to the public.
I, I've had every lawyer I ever had tell me that was a big no.
Yeah.
The optics.
Yellow, yellow, the whole way down.
The optics of it were bad.
The optics are bad, for sure.
I don't see it that way, to be honest with you. In an instance, like what we did there, I don't see why.
He made us go to a class.
Have a good evening.
Duty of our government, it's all in the eye of the.
I'm done with you.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Springboard.
Right. It's handled by, argued by attorneys.
They're just supposed to offer opinions, they don't create.
The seven holders.
Did you move to approve these?
Uh, no. I can if you want. I've moved to approve the tax rule corrections for years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four as presented.
Uh, second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. What do you want, that I get turned in to the Attorney General again? It'll be the third time.
Yeah. I haven't had to defend one down here in quite a while.
Well, they sent that Attorney General's attorney back and found that we weren't in violation, I wasn't in violation, so I turned my nose up to those that turned me in.
What'd you do with the bill, there's, can I have this bill?
These are your, you'll be playing a dead snake, sometimes you get bit.
That was Jones' or?
That, that blue binder next to you.
Oh.
Sorry.
The official binders are. They usually don't allow me to have that, so I'm not used to having it around me.
Who's this?
Josh was saying.
Please part that.
In addition to? These in addition to, right?
Yeah.
Alright.
Oh. Other.
So you got two separates and then the stack, is that right?
Of those two, and then, this is an estimate of just compensation for permanent easement acquisition. I don't remember that we have seen any of these. Cause I've often wondered about it. And we purchased easement north of Burlingame for that bridge, and they didn't come here.
Okay, I think those are just the voucher rules, what do you?
Okay, so we're not approving the actual purchase and the price from that.
We're just, we're paying.
Paying the bill.
Got you.
I always thought they probably should come here, we are the purveyors of county property.
The grant fours are the ones assigned those, so, uh, you're just approving them.
Got you. Okay, while you continue to review that, I'm gonna take care of these rather large ones in front of me. So I'll need a motion to approve paying the water bill in the amount of a hundred and six ninety-nine. And a part of that motion will be to pay the invoice for three hundred dollars to the KCTA County Treasurers Association Conference.
Yep.
And as part of that, pending hand check for seven hundred and twenty dollars for easement acquisition.
Was that a motion?
No, I need that motion.
Oh, so moved.
And I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I don't know what that is, Josh handed that to me. Sorry.
Well, this one's already been approved and signed.
That would just need Josh's, it all, so.
Got it?
What?
This one just needed yous all, and you got it.
Okay, good, good.
Check. CMB application, check. Tax rule corrections, check, 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 and?
Lose, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep those together, don't lose them, we'll get you all that.
That was a good, good meeting, actually. It went well.
Yeah.
I thought I would have to get somebody.
You got a little dicey, we had just got everything, we had somebody stand behind you ominously.
I knew it, cause there, I offered him a chair, and he turned it down, and I said, no one wants this chair. And he didn't like that. That guy, I have a conversation coming for him. He caused quite the ruckus at one of our burning deals. Got escorted out by police.
I have experience in defending those, as criminal prosecutions and other things.
Do you?
Yeah, give me my card.
I will.
I got a buddy of mine, it's been several years ago, he got in trouble with Lawrence when he went to vote because he's wearing a I still like Ike badge.
Oh, gosh.
And they called that a political.
I mean, it's a technicality, but.
That guy, he ain't running for election. It's one of those deals, back when they were doing that, uh, drive at the state fair, if you donate money to the memorial, you know, they'd give you ba, uh, pens out or things, so. Them Lorenseans are a little different, though.
They are. Don't like.
They don't, they still don't like that.
Oh, you guys are, since I had sent the commissioners an email about specific breakdown of switching to employment in twenty twenty-six, um, I don't know if we leave that on agenda, or can we just do it at some point? Remember, do you guys, I just wanted to confirm, do you guys receive it?
Yeah, I'm guessing you should just probably put it on in October and just take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, but the main, main question is whether you want to allocate eight hours a month to, um,
Cooline.
And my plan would just be to set aside an hour every Friday just to check in, plus four hours worth of work product.
I'll have to, yeah.
But it's in, I looked at budget, you budgeted just my same contract rate from a couple of years ago, but it had tax sale in it, too, and you guys haven't spent any tax sale money for three years. So hopefully you do next year or thereafter with the new trader that's been held up. I'm just confirming the taxes.
Okay, that being said, I need a motion to approve paying the bills in the amount of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
We're using right on cue with that one. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion care, reads. Have a lovely evening.